Good evening, your worship and councillors, mayor's staff. My name is Mary Merritt Jackson and I am here this evening, as you know, with Roy Hardman. Roy is the Chair of the Board of our Child Advocacy Centre. And I know that you have received a lot of our information in your packages, so we're here basically to highlight and to clarify any information that you may want to know further.
Thank you, and thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We have an overhead presentation, however, most of our presentation because of the time limitations will be done from virtualizing.
Okay.
Okay. With all that abounds in the community of Niagara, it's difficult to understand the level of child abuse that is currently occurring. Our statistics in 2005 show that there were 389 reported cases. A national statistic revealed that one in every three girl and one in every five boys will be physically and/or sexually assaulted prior to the age of 18. What is the CACN? The Child Advocacy Centre of Niagara is derived from a successful model by the public spell Alabama. It's a model of practice that seeks to make the people who respond to child abuse much more responsive to the needs of the children by providing a single operational site for abused child to be brought to. Typical response under the current process is to have the designated people who are responsible for the authorities in the law enforcement, child protection, and medical people, to have the child tend at their particular area to cover up their particular mandate. This system is predicated on the needs of the adults, not children. Our criminal justice system and design of courts is predicated on adult capacities, whereas children experience these results in very different ways. If you think of us as an adult, how you have to recant these events that weren't particularly pleasant, and then think of what a child would be facing going through these circumstances. There is an inability to provide services from a child's perspective. This system needs to recognize this. The simplicity of the Child Advocacy Centre is that it provides a service base where the professionals come to the child and therefore reducing the secondary trauma to the child victim when they do make disclosure of child abuse by providing a child-friendly environment and sanctuary for them. We're partnered with the Law and Orders Niagara Regional Police and Child Protection, Family and Children's Services. The Child Advocacy Centre of Niagara is a community-based directive led by a Board of Directors. It's one place where a multidisciplinary team of professionals can investigate allegations of physical and/or sexual child abuse. It provides appropriate support services for child victims and their families in a comfortable home-like setting. Our goals are attainable. Our goals are to reduce child trauma to the child victim and increase conviction rates. The centre is not just the first response. The dynamics of child abuse are very complex. The advocacy component will identify things like why are some children more vulnerable to abuse and therefore at higher risk? Why are some offenders in a position of possessing a greater level of risk than others? Educating the public, professionals, parents, and other persons having custody or care of children on how to recognize, prevent, and develop more effective responses to child abuse will be accomplished through courses, seminars, conferences, media, and referral services. Our mission, CACN, is dedicated to minimizing the trauma to children and families in an abuse investigation. A child right now under the present system will be interviewed as many as seven times. That interview will take place in sterile environments like police stations, hospitals, and the child is being asked to repeat their story over and over. Tomorrow, under the Child Advocacy Centre, this will be reduced to a minimum, and we're going to aim for one interview only. So the result will reduce the trauma to the child and will present and provide stronger evidence for convictions. We followed the USA's experience, and their results have been that they have increased confession rates from 60 to 90 percent. Conviction rate has increased to 90 percent. Increased successful plea bargains, which means there's fewer children in our courts. Now, reduction in time required from disclosure to trial has come from 18 to six months. The current status of our centre, we have successfully negotiated the purchase of a building located at 8 Forester Street in St. Catherine's. We have developed a live-phase marketing plan and are currently in phase two. Some of you may have heard on the radios our PSAs that have been framed, and also within the papers, we have the PSAs, they're shown, and Osprey has put it in all of the papers, this is one of them, you may have seen. We are developing our policies and procedures, measures, to ensure the achievement of our goals are on target. We're proceeding with our fundraising, a $750,000 budget. Currently, we are at over $300,000. We've developed a functional plan for sustainability. We have renovations that should commence on or about July of this year, and we will continue to seek out other partners that will provide services, awareness, and join us in reducing child abuse in Niagara. We are targeting the centre to be opened in the fall of this year. We are very pleased to bring this model to the communities of Niagara and to be the first of its kind in Canada. There is a lot of work still remaining, however, with the dedication of the board members, the fundraisers, our partners, and the community's support, I am confident the goals of the Child Advocacy Centre of Niagara will be reached. We are requesting financial support from Niagara Falls in the amount of $1,500 or 10 cents per capita, whichever is greater. If there are any questions, I'll please answer for you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Hardman. I do believe that currently in our budget, we do have $1,500 allocated, and then council will be delivering the budget over the next probably few weeks, and the staff will be in touch to let you know what the outcome is. Do I have any members of council that have a comment? Councilor Thompson, please.
Thank you for your presentation, and I was interested to read the material that was presented to us, pretty insignificant amount when you talk about abuse of children. But I'm wondering, and I know maybe you're doing this for a specific reason, going around each individual council, 12 councils, but wouldn't it be better just to go to the region and ask for, on behalf of all the municipalities, to support your program?
We are going to the region as well. What we're looking at in this one, Wayne, is we're looking at the statistics throughout the region and the municipalities, and each of the municipalities are recorded at the level that they are currently involved with. Niagara Falls, for example, is second highest.
I would think so.
And so what we're looking at is for this to be a community response. The region is on our list, it's the agenda to go there, and we're hoping that they will support this as well, but we're going to each of the communities. And not expecting if we get money from them, that's great, but awareness, we have to make ourselves aware of this issue as well.
I thought maybe that was the main focus, the awareness, and putting your program before the community, so anyway, thank you.
May I have councillor Carrillo, that was just my comment?
Thank you. How did you determine where the centre was to be located?
Our first experience with that was we looked at the centre of the region, and we went to Front Hill being the centre, and we thought that we would like to find a building in Front Hill. We found the building, we put a purchase offer in on it, we had to have a meeting with the groups that surrounded the building because we had to have a change to the amendment, or sorry, an amendment to zoning, and so we had that public meeting. There were approximately 100 people there, and they all thought it was a great idea. We worked, they supported it, but not in their backyard. So our next move that we had to do was we had to go and find another building. So we looked in Welland, we looked in other different places in Niagara Falls, and the first building that we come across that was suitable again was in St. Catherine's. So that's actually how it was found.
My next question would be, do you see that there would be a need to have other centres, or would St. Catherine's be ample for the region? Would you see other centres, like one in Niagara, one in Welland, or is one centre in Niagara?
There would be one centre for the region.
Niagara region?
All of the region. However, I believe this model is going to go across Ontario and it's not Canada, and I think that we'll be able to take it there.
Thank you.
That is the building there. Thank you for ever putting that up.
Okay, councillor Ayenoni and councillor Diodati.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your statistics are heartbreaking. I mean, as a mother, when you read these, it crushes me to hear this. If you need a motion, Mr. Chair, to refer to budget, I would be so happy to make it.
Okay, thank you. Motion by councillor Ayenoni, seconded by the mayor. Any other questions to the motion? All those in favor, both motions carried. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Hardman.
Thank you.
Next presentation that we have is from the Board of Museums, and I believe we have Mr. Gordon West and Mrs. Cathy Powell here. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, your worship, members of council. Thank you for having us here this evening to discuss with you the successes of our museum over the past year and what we have to look forward to in the coming year. I'm Gordon West. As Mr. Chair has said, I'm the Chair of the City's Board of Museums. With me tonight are some board members as well, Mark Downs was our Vice Chair, Don Jackson, who has been with us now for some time, and a couple of new members, Daniel Rodriguez and Tony Cariso, who have given up all of their spare time for the Board of Museums. And certainly Vince Carrillo, who is our member from council. I'm going to turn over the discussion of what we have done and what we are looking forward to to Cathy, and then I'll have a few words at the end, and then certainly we'll answer any questions that she may have to the Board and or the museums.
Thank you very much. I'm going to just show a short presentation, it's only about 10 slides or so, and basically to give you a little update on where the museum board was in the last year and where we're going in the future. So museums in our community actually provide a sense of place, and they showcase what is actually the identity of a community and showcases growth. Try to imagine just personally explaining who you are without using your heritage as part of that explanation, and it's the same when you're talking about a community. You can't really talk about what the identity of your community is without talking about its heritage, because that's really what's made the community what it is today. And museums present the history as it was actually lived in that community, and most of the things in the museum, as I'm sure those of you who've been around for a while would remember me saying, things in a museum are just objects, it's actually the stories that are attached to them that make those objects significant. So you could have a teacup, which isn't really significant on its own, but if you knew that Laura Seabord drank out of that teacup before she took her 20-mile walk, that's what makes it significant. So that's really what museums are all about. We're the stewards of the community's history and of our identity. Over the last two terms, being in the last two terms of the Board of Museums, which is roughly about six years or so, the Board of Museums has come a long way. We started with an operational review about six years ago, and in those years, we've implemented most of the recommendations in the operational review, and now we have a renewed group of strategic directions on where the museums would like to go to continue that momentum and move it forward. So these are the directions. Number one, facilities, stabilization, and improvement. All of our museums are in historic buildings, and historic buildings are not necessarily the optimum location to keep, you would think they would be, but to keep old things. Climate control is always an issue, generally the building's falling apart in different ways, and storage spaces, it's not really purpose-built for that, but it is also recognized that it's important to preserve those historic buildings as well. Community outreach, the museum staff and the museum's objects are actually out in the community quite a bit. We've put on displays at many different places, the least of which is there's a display down by the clerks' office in City Hall. We've participated in some of the programs at the library, and also the museums offer a place where groups in the community can come in and put displays into the museum of their own group. So we have a community exhibit program. One of the other directions is preserving the unique character of the community, and that includes collections that are out there that should be in the museums, that shouldn't be lost to our community, are brought into the museums or brought back into our community. If you just go onto eBay and put in Niagara Falls, you get thousands and thousands of objects that are historic about Niagara Falls, and a lot of them are in the States or in Europe. Some of those things should be in our community rather than all over the world. We should be the ones showcasing our own heritage. The Niagara Falls Museum Board does a lot of active advocacy in the community, not just for itself, but for heritage in general, and I'm sure you know that people who are interested in history are very passionate about that, not necessarily just on the museum board, but history, people in general, and that's part of our advocacy is to make it as exciting to everybody else as it is to us. The Board of Museums has also taken on active fundraising towards the capital improvements that are going to be required to make our museums world-class. I lost last slide, but doesn't matter. Responsible facilities management is very important, and resource management. The Niagara Falls Board of Museums is really just the steward for the collections that the city actually owns. We're there to keep care of that, and that includes keeping care of the buildings. The buildings are pretty much the biggest artifacts that we own, and for the newer city council members or people around the table here today, these are our facilities from the right to left. We have the Lundy's Lane Historical Museum on Ferry Street. In the middle is the Battleground Hotel Museum, which is at the top of Lundy's Lane and Drummond Road, right across from the Drummond Hill Cemetery. The Willoughby Historical Museum, which is out on the Niagara Parkway at Weaver Road, and the Niagara Falls Armory, which the Board of Museums is responsible for management of that facility. The War of 1812 Bicentennial, it's coming close very quickly, it's only about five or six years away, and it's very important that Niagara Falls, with probably the most significant 1812 site, be a leader in how the bicentennial is celebrated and commemorated. But the museum board also recognizes that any commemorative activities that the museum board takes on on behalf of the city be inclusive, involve as many people in the community as possible, but also create a lasting legacy so that after 2014, there's still something there for the next 50 years for people to remember from the War of 1812. These are just a few slides of some examples of things that have been added to the collections in the last year. We had a large collection of costumes from the Costume Society, which is out in Victoria, B.C. They were closing their museum unfortunately because of funding constraints, and they sent a large portion of their collection to us to care for. Some hydro paraphernalia, there's a stove there which belonged to the Hydro Company, there's some slides of different postcards, some photos of the Niagara Falls Park and River Railway, and the Loretta window, which might be something people would recognize in the bottom corner there. Some examples of things we've done in the community this year. Most of you probably remember the Mustang, the car raffle, which is finished finally, was drawn in February during Heritage Week, and a local person won that, a gentleman named Bruce Woodruff, which is a great thing, and he lives in St. David's, so that's very exciting. Also, we have the exhibits, as I mentioned earlier, and part of our exhibits is the Community Exhibit Program at the Lundy's Lane Museum. And then in the middle on the left-hand side there is a copy of a postcard that was done this year through a campaign that was done through the Ontario Museum Association, tried to increase provincial funding to museums. So part of our advocacy has actually included trying to get more money from other levels of government so as to hopefully take the burden off of some of the other people who are giving us money. And that program was fairly successful this year, it's going to continue. The Community Museum Operating Grant Program has actually been frozen for 10 years and hasn't had an increase for museums. Now, the funding the museums in Niagara Falls gets fairly small. It's about, I think it's about $17,000, it's quite small. However, every little bit counts, and even though that program was frozen for the last 10 years, the Ontario Museum Association, with the help of the Niagara Falls museums and other museums around the province, really put a push on to the government, and the government, in the last budget, actually announced funding increase to that program for the next two years of $2.6 million for the next two years. So that's a really positive thing. Hopefully, it'll translate into more money into our part of the museum operating grant program. There's no word yet on how that will be actually funneled down to the museums to get a portion of that. And then capital fundraising. If you remember our raffle, part of the reason why we were doing the raffle was to raise money for a project the Board of Museums would like to see completed by the end of the bicentennial of the War of 1812, and that includes a major capital expansion to the Lundy's Lane Historical Museum. The museum board actually did a feasibility study quite a while ago now, and this is some slides from that. It shows how an extension could possibly work out. It would come out the back of the Lundy's Lane Museum and off to the side, taking over just a portion of the parking lot that's behind the building. But the museums are very severely lacking in space, and there's no handicapped accessibility at any of our facilities at the moment, which is really unfortunate. So this would really make a difference, and the Board of Museums is going to, or has committed to active capital fundraising over the next few years to put this program into effect. So our heritage assets are actually, just like a lot of environmental people say, heritage assets are actually non-renewable. You can't replace them once they're gone. That doesn't just include objects, that includes stories and associations with those objects. And the Board of Museums, as stewards of all of those things, including the stories and the things, take the responsibility of stewardship very seriously, and that's where all of our strategic directions are directed towards that stewardship ethic. And that's the end of my presentation. The board has a couple things to add.
Cathy knows, I always like to have kind of the last word, so the board knows as well. So I'd just like to take the opportunity to go over a little bit of what Cathy's already said, which is the bicentennial, which is coming up. It's only five years away, and it is, it makes the work of the board and of the museums all much more important. It's our opportunity to commemorate not only what is being talked about as 200 years apiece, but the defining act of two nations, what defined the United States and what defined us at that time. Pretty much, we believe that the Battle of Lundy's Lane was the last significant battle of the war. I said that to someone from another community, and he said, "Don't forget that everybody's battle is the most significant battle of the war." But we know that ours is in fact the most significant battle of the war, and that Lundy's Lane and the Battleground and the Battle of Lundy's Lane are certainly something that we need to celebrate. In the next five years, you will find that the eastern half of the continent is beginning to come together to celebrate this, and we think that this is our opportunity to lead the way. It'll take this next five years to grow something that will be celebrated here, and as a result, we both believe that Niagara Falls can become an historic destination, a worthy, we already are a worthy destination, but we are going to add heritage as being a worthy destination and bring that many more people here. We believe that we can do it. We, as the Niagara Falls Board of Museums, have been charged with that, and we intend to do so. I thank you for your support in the past, look forward to your support as we go into the future, and think that we can take this opportunity to become what we really can be as far as a heritage community. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, thank you, Mr. West and Mrs. Powell. I have Mayor Salsi that wants to make a comment.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. West and Mrs. Powell with respect to their efforts in the task force for the bicentennial celebrations that we're looking at. We already had members of council an opportunity to present a request to both our provincial and federal members, and we're at least recorded for having to want to seek out something of great significance with regard to our prominence in the celebrations and something of some long-lasting legacy. And to that end, I noticed that the request is for $10,000 to assist in the funding. The committee is some 20 strong and meets on a regular basis, so I'd be prepared to recommend this to, to move it to final deliberations.
Okay. Move by Mayor Salsi, seconded by councillor Diodati. Do I have any other comments? Councillor Fisher, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very proud to say that I've sat on the board for 16 or more years, and I can think back and our discussions many times over with our previous mayor, and I believe it was 1985 when we first talked about the addition onto the museum to house our great artifacts. And at that time, money was put aside, and unfortunately, money was taken away. And since then, it's been very difficult to do anything with the museum. So I'm very pleased now that they've had the time to look at, this would be the wonderful legacy after the Battle of 2012, 2012, that we could maybe and possibly have a new museum on that particular location, because that location is very significant. We talked about it many times, maybe we should move it because of this and that, but that is part of the battlefield. So I'm very happy and very proud of this particular group and the work they've accomplished. And I wish more people in the city of Niagara Falls would go to the museum and see what the Niagara Falls Lundy's Lane Museum is all about. And I'm very happy that councillor Carrillo now sits on that board. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments, councillor Fisher. If there aren't any other comments, there is a motion. Oh, sorry, councillor Mace.
I just have a question, just looking at that Lundy's Lane Museum and the drawing of the attachment, that's such a great-looking old building, that won't spoil the look any of the, the attachment will fit right? It's such a unique-looking building, you wouldn't want to spoil that.
The original one did not, the facade was to still be there, the side of the building was still there, where the fire touched one so many years before. We have in fact used some money that we had set aside some time ago to recommission the study to bring it up to date and to put some things, such as what you're saying, as well as accessibility, new storage facilities. It's 20 years since the last one was done, and our needs have changed, and we're looking 20 years in the future to do that kind of thing.
Are you selling any more books, about some books that last year that I think?
We will sell you, sir, anything that you'd like as far as books are concerned. Our gift shop will be happy to accommodate you. Did I say that? I'm certain I said it to the right person, anyway.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to move the request to final budget deliberations. All those in favor, both motions carried. Thank you very much. Next presentation that we have is from the Niagara Military Museum, and I have down that Mr. Beck is going to speak tonight. Welcome, Mr. Beck.
Welcome to all of you. Mr. Chairman, your worship, members of council, city staff, veterans, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here this evening as a spokesman for the Niagara Military Museum to speak in favor of having the city approve our grant request. In the gallery are veterans, and I was hoping some of the POWs could make it, and they didn't, and our youth, who are here in support of our grant request. I thank them for being here and for their support. This museum would honor the veterans of Niagara by telling the story of the service of this city's men and women in all services in Canada's armed forces over the past 200 years. I am sure all of you are aware, as you participated in the Remembrance Day observances last year, of the dwindling number of veterans on parade, who will tell their story to our young people when they are gone? How will future generations learn to avoid the horrors of war if there's no firsthand accounts available to them? The Armory is the most suitable location for this project. Since it was built in 1911, the Armory has been the symbol of Canada's military in Niagara Falls. It was from here that literally thousands of citizens marched off to fight World War I, World War II, Korea. More recently, it has seen, and when I say recently, if it was before it was decommissioned, it has seen... it has seen the training of young men and women for peacekeeping operations throughout the world. Many never returned. We would honor their sacrifice, moving ahead with the opening of the Niagara Military Museum is not just the establishing of another museum here in Niagara Falls, but rather a tribute to those Niagrens as well as other Canadians who served this great nation, individuals who stepped forward when called to face those who would challenge world peace. Those individuals quite often during the course of this service suffered and sacrificed all they had and in many cases, the sacrifice included their lives. We owe this museum not only to their memory, but to our youth who need to be educated in what sacrifices were made and why. It's our military heritage and it's up to us to ensure that it is not just swept under a carpet and forgotten. Recently, we lost one of our own and more recently, we lost six other brave and committed souls in Afghanistan. These Canadian soldiers were fighting for people who without our help would be suppressed by a small group of fanatics who would control a nation with tools of terror. These Canadian soldiers did not die for nothing. Their memory would be part of this museum, as would documentation and exhibits of all those worthy of our memories. We would ask the city of Niagara Falls to step up to our call for assistance and to make this museum a reality. The Niagara Military Museum is requesting a grant to help cover some of the startup costs when we move into the Niagara Falls Armory. We have listed the areas that the funding will be used for, with the exception of the rent, which is still being negotiated in a lease for the city. And I believe that was passed around, was it?
They're in their package.
Okay. The grant will be used to construct modular display cabinets, purchase and install audiovisual equipment, more mannequins to display uniforms, fundraising flyers, gift shop equipment, and an exterior sign. All the labor required will be provided by volunteers. And in fact, as for our business plan, the Niagara Military Museum fully intends to be self-sufficient in five years of funding. Hopefully, in the very near future, our lease will be in place and startup funding that we are pressing this evening will be approved. This will be a fitting tribute to our military past thanks to city council and the dedicated members of Niagara Military Museum. Thank you for your support during this most critical startup time. In closing, I urge you, search your consciousness and ask yourself if you truly believe this is a project worthy of your support. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Beck. And I'm sure you're aware that currently there is $40,000 in the draft for our 2007 budget. I'll ask any members of council if they have any questions of Mr. Beck. And if, Councilor Thompson? Move refer to final budget deliberations, seconded by Councilor Fisher. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Next presentation that we have is from the Women's Place of South Niagara. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, your worship, members of council and staff. I thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I understand that the submission was in your package, so I have a short, six-slide PowerPoint presentation that's meant to complement that and to give you some statistics on how pervasive this issue is in our society as well as on our own community. So, alarming statistics. One out of three women will experience some form of abuse in their lifetime. Thirty-two percent of spital violence victims who reported to the police already had a restraining order or protective order against the abuser. There have been approximately 25 female victims of spital homicide each year in Ontario from 1975 to 2004. Almost 40% of women assaulted by spouses said their children witnessed the violence against them and in many cases, the violence was severe. And 21% of women were assaulted while pregnant. Additionally, 83% of women with disabilities will be sexually assaulted during their lifetime. Aboriginal women are three times more likely to experience spital violence than non-aboriginal women. Fifty-three percent of women escaping abusive situations were admitted to shelters with their children and 65% of these children were under the age of 10. And more than 1 million children in Canada have witnessed violence in their own home. And the source for this information is from Statistics Canada, who for a number of years have actually written a specific report of family violence in Canada and the Ontario Women's Directorate. The cost to Niagara. In 1995, one of the first studies on family violence against women estimated the economic cost to Canadian citizens at $4.2 billion. The Leadership Summit, which I know some of you attended in April 27, 2005, is everybody's business. From that 1995 study, it extrapolated figures, adjusted for inflation, and did a per capita calculation. The cost to Niagara to deal with this problem for health systems, justice systems, et cetera, is $71 million. The number of women and children who sought refuge in our shelters in our last fiscal year. 184 women and children resided in our Nova House Shelter in Niagara Falls. And I'd like you to note that the residency was primarily at our previous shelter, which was a 12-bed shelter. And our new shelter, which opened in January 2007, is a 20-bed shelter and we believe our occupancy will increase accordingly because the year before that, we had to turn away 157 women and children. 129 women and children resided in our Welland Shelter, of which 7% were citizens of Niagara Falls. And they had to leave the city because they needed to move out for safety and security reasons. Our crisis lines last year received over 2,000 calls and hundreds more were supported through office visits or on an outreach basis by our legal advocates as well as our transitional housing and support program advocates. Our operating funding, we expect the Ministry of Community and Social Services to provide 70% to 72% of our overall day-to-day operating funding. The other 28% of the funding required must be sought from individual and corporate donors, foundations, municipalities like yourselves, the United Way, third-party fundraising events, and our own signature funding events, such as our annual Strikeout Finals bowling tournament each March and our annual book ride in Niagara Falls, which we'll be celebrating its 30th year in May. And last year, 359 volunteers provided 10,900 hours of support to our agency. So, our ask, and we hope that you'll continue to fund us for $25,000, will enable women and children who are citizens of Niagara Falls to access at no cost, a menu of services which will support them with the creation and implementation of their own individualized safety and traditional plan. Ultimately, the results of our actions are cumulative and we all benefit from promoting and providing healthier, safer homes, workplaces, and communities. Together, we can empower women and children who have been victims of abuse to begin to live in our community, violence-free lives. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Are there any questions?
Um, is there any questions by members of council? Okay. If none, then there would be a motion to, okay, to send the request to final budget deliberations. Motion by Councilor Thompson, seconded by his worship. All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Next presentation that we have is from the GNGH Foundation. And I believe we have Mr. Somerville, Mr. Somerville here to make that presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, your worship, members of council. We'd like to take an opportunity tonight to give you a brief update on what's been happening in the ER department, funding campaigns that you've supported in the past, and to make our presentation. I believe, Mr. Clerk, that the letter from December was circulated to all members of council, which contain our financial reports. I have a guest with me tonight, which I'll introduce briefly shortly. I want to start the presentation and I can control the slides from here?
You can. Just one thing, we did a run-through this afternoon and some of your slides looked a little watered out, so there may be a couple that you may not be sure what it is, so I'll give you that for now.
I'm sure what they are, but nobody else.
Yeah, you'll have to describe it.
As you're aware, we are in the process of completing a major renovation, a $22 million project at the hospital. Phase one of that project was our ER department. And these are slides that you've seen a number of years ago when we first came to seeking support. It was cramped, it was outdated, it wasn't good for anybody coming into the hospital. It was originally built for 25,000 patient visits. It was opened in 1958 and it's been in service since then. We are thrilled that we've been able to move into new quarters and Marlene will be telling you a bit about that shortly. As I said, it was outdated. It's ironic, 2007 marks the 100th anniversary of hospitals in Niagara Falls. In 1907, the Jefferson Street site for the Greater Niagara Hospital was opened. In 2007, we're into our 100th year. Next year will mark the 50th anniversary of the opening of the current site in 2008. So, these buildings have seen a lot of service, they've had a lot of traffic through them and helped a lot of families and patients and people in Niagara. As I said, I have a guest with me tonight. Marlene Cardwell is a registered nurse. Marlene is the charge nurse in the ER department at the hospital. And I've asked Marlene to join me to tell you a little bit about what's happened with the investment that's been made thus far. So, Marlene?
Hi.
Welcome.
As you can tell, we were all really thrilled when we celebrated the opening of a new ER department on January the 12th with the official ribbon-cutting ceremony. We've looked forward to this day for so many years, it's hard to believe sometimes it's actually happened. As of January the 60th, we were moved in and seeing patients. As you're probably all aware, there have been some growing pains along the way with the continued construction and there are parking and entrance problems that will hopefully be resolved with the completion of phase two of the project. As nurses, we've been dealing with sore feet, walking more than we have, than we did before. We anticipated this and concluded that it's worth it by being able to work in a bright new, beautiful department.
I should point out, it really isn't pink.
No, really, it's not that bright. In our Jeff, in our new Jeff Morgan Emergency Department, we have gone from a cramped facility building for handling 25,000 patients annually, which I already said, to one that is capable of handling 65,000 patients annually. Once phase two is completed, the extra clinics that have moved in temporarily with us, we have the same medical unit and the outpatient clinic. And they actually, right now, they're in our fast-track area and some of our treatment rooms between the hours of 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. So, once they're gone, then we'll be able to use our facility right to the top capacity. Our new ER department is the model for the rest of Canada. The design was developed in the wake of the SARS crisis and also in our involvement in a critical incident that involved the Mancus chemical plant a few years ago. That incident inspired work on present-day protocols, which we have worked on extensively, and that resulted in lobbying to government officials for appropriate equipment and training, ultimately concluding in the new provincial CBRN program currently being implemented. We now have new equipment and personal protective gear to work along with our decon area and this enables us to protect the facility, the staff, and crew patients from being harmed by explosive chemical contaminants from the disaster patients. Thus, we are able to provide the best medical care as well to patients presenting for help. We are now in the process of actually training emergency staff as well as a lot of support staff in the hospital so that we can handle these disasters properly. All of our new equipment that we've been needing for a few years has enabled us to get the best care for our patients in the most efficient manner. As one of the nurses said, when you remember how to turn the equipment on, it always works. Whereas before, you couldn't even find the equipment or it didn't work and we spent a lot of time filling with the only equipment that was outdated and in need of replacement. Your generous gift of $100,000 has enabled us to buy a lot of that new equipment. We now have state-of-the-art cardiac monitors with added features such as automatic blood pressure oximetry, which saves a lot of time as they're all in one unit. We're not running around stealing from room to room to kind of take care of our patients. We also have ECD features on our cardiac monitors, which means that if you're actually on a monitor and you develop more chest pain, we can do a really quick ECD, which gives you a lot quicker diagnosis for the doctors to give you treatment. Our new defibrillators, which we're really proud of, are also biphasic, which meet the latest newest standard of care. Basically, it means that the current, instead of just running one way through the myocardium when you're shocked, actually goes there and back. So, it's half the current that we actually have to use, much safer for the patient. Another basic piece of equipment that we receive is the AccuDose, which is the automated dispensing of medication and narcotics. Each nurse enters an ID number and you enter the patient's name and the correct medications are automatically opened. This results in less possibility of errors and meds are automatically counted each time. Pharmacy can more accurately make sure that we have our meds up to stock. We are the first ER department in the region to have this and they actually have this in one of the hospitals in Hamilton in our land. Our pediatric resuscitation carts is another thing we're really proud of, the Braslow carts, which are color-coded according to the age and the weight of the child. We now have two of them, one in our resuscitation room and one in our pediatric treatment room. They've already been used a few times in the care of some of our critical patients and the nurses just had great reviews on how it was so great to be able to pull up the one drawer, all the equipment that you need for that patient, no matter what size is in that drawer, you're not kind of digging through trying to find the right size. Having the X-ray department in our own department is also a great savings. It cuts down on our use of porters when we have patients in resusc and in our trauma room, it's so much quicker to get the X-rays as well as our new PAC system, so it automatically comes up on the computer screen so the doctors have access to it immediately. It is so important for our health professionals to have the equipment, technology, and facilities they need to provide quality and compassionate care for the thousands of patients who pass through emergency doors every year. Once again, thank you for your generous contribution. Let me assure you that every dollar is making a difference.
Thank you, Mrs. Cardwell. And Mr. Somerville, I see at least one other member of the GNGH Foundation in the public who would like to recognize me.
Absolutely. Joyce Morocco is our chair of the GNGH Foundation Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I should have run that off the top, so apologies, Joyce, but glad to be here. I just have a couple more slides and then we'll take any questions that you have. Before I go to the next slide, I want to thank Marlene. Now you know why I brought her with me, which she talks about all these fancy pieces of equipment and things that are being used daily, better that you hear from those that are working with it than somebody who's just on the side that occasionally unfortunately has to use it. As I mentioned earlier, the ER department renovation was phase one of the two-phase project. A lot of things are still going on. When you try to enter the hospital now, it's actually very confusing and difficult to find your way around. That's a temporary situation. Phase two is construction of the surgical daycare unit in where the old ER was. It's also, phase two is for updating the operating rooms and creating a new main entrance to the hospital where the original entry was. We know that it's awkward and difficult, but we're asking the public to bear with us while we complete these projects. Overall, as I said earlier, it was a $22 million project. The ER department portion of that was around $9.3 million. That is in place and your funding has helped. $1 million of that amount of money was for equipment to replace the aging pieces that we have there. We're here tonight to ask you if you would continue that support. So, our formal request to you is for a donation of $100,000 to continue to support the equipment needs of the ER department at the hospital. And what Niagara Falls gets from that, they get the very best care we could possibly provide. And as Marlene has stated, going from the numbers that we've been able to accommodate appropriately in the past to now having a facility that will look after 65,000 people annually, it allows for growth, it provides a better work environment for the staff that are there. And yes, we are going through some growing pains, teething pains as we sort everything out, but under Marlene's leadership and the other people working in the ER department, we're looking forward to far better things for the people of Niagara. So, thank you very much and if there are any questions, we'd be pleased to try and answer them for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Somerville. I have Counselor Ainoni first, Counselor Fisher, and then your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To three to Mrs. Cardwell. I was hoping we'd see a medal pinned there because you girls need one in there. I saw the picture of the empty chairs, I bet that's the last time you've seen that room empty. And now you ran a statistic there on a lack of family physicians and we still need 20, 22 more family physicians. What are the, what's the percentage of orphan patients that you get in there? Because it's got to be astronomical.
The percentage, I have no idea, but we do have hospitalists.
The percentage, I have no idea, but we do have hospitalists in there that help a lot. So we're not constantly calling on the family doctors because we're doing a lot of call. And it kind of gives us a kind of consistent care. They kind of expect it of us and they're readily available. So as soon as we have somebody who's headed and they don't have a family doctor, we assign a hospitalist on call. Which helps out a lot as far as the meditations, though.
I can imagine. I can't imagine having your job. You can hardly, I think.
It is.
You know what I think you guys can hear? Just try to have some more motion.
Okay, I'll take the motion now. Do I have a second or do I have your worship? Any questions? Actually, I'll let some people speak first. Counselor Fisher, please.
Very quickly, again, I can also say the facility was beautiful. I had that great opportunity. But I've also heard and I've seen the waiting time. When can we see an improvement in waiting time? People sit there for hours and that's very difficult because when you're in an emergency situation, it's forever. Or you have a child that's very sick. It's very hard and you don't come away with a very good feeling. Can you see it correcting itself very shortly?
I do. We've only been in there now three months, so we have been going through a lot of process. We actually, in our department itself, we've actually made our own nurse committee practice meeting, a committee, and quite a few are on it. So we're trying to increase the process, the whole process. What's happened is we've gotten two departments that are set up a bit different than our other area was. So we've got a whole bunch of committees going and we're all working on one separate thing as well as even the management. We have a lot of things that we're coming through to, we're increasing our staff. And we were given the increasing staff. The trouble is that in many times, we've had long staff shifting around. So we do have two more full-time staff coming and I've been dealing with management and we have a lot of RPTs, which haven't been filled, regular part-time ones. So we're actually making full-time positions, which have put the postings up. So we're working really quickly to get that extra staff and keep our morale up and to keep the process going. We have quite a few things that we're working on. I'm hoping within the next three months, there will be a big, a big improvement again.
Thank you, because tourist season is here. Tourist season is here.
A bigger, newer facility doesn't address all of those problems. Counselor Iannone pointed out that if we could get more family physicians and doctors in town, we may have less people presenting at the emergency department. But it's better for someone to try to be aware.
Absolutely. I admire yourself. I wish to make a comment.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased to have had the opportunity to join with you at council to celebrate the opening of the facility. It wasn't that long ago that we made our request, as you know, to the Minister. And it was nice to see that finally the government did deliver on the bricks and mortar. As you know, and for the benefit of those watching, we provide for the equipment. And I think this request is certainly a very valid one. I want to tip my hat, if I could, to the foundation, to Mike, to Joyce, certainly to Marlene and the staff for what they do. We've done so much with so little in the past, and it's nice at this point that we're on the leading edge. And I think we can facilitate healthcare in Niagara throughout our city on the leading edge with this request. So I'm more than pleased to second that.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other councillors that wish to make a comment? If not, there is a motion on the floor to move the request to final budget deliberations. All those in favor? Close motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next presentation is from the Niagara Falls Public Library. And I believe that Mr. Dix and Mr. Longo are here tonight. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. And good evening, Mr. Chair, your worship, members of council. I'm Carme Dix, Chair of the Niagara Falls Public Library Board. Chief Librarian Joe Longo was with me again tonight. Other board members are Nancy Ite, Dino Fazio, Dino's with us, Mike O'Callaghan, who is also with us tonight, Blake McIntyre, Rennie Piscatelli, Guy Prada, right over there, and Ken Smith. Council is represented on the board by Counselor Shirley Fisher. She does a great job. On December the 1st, the library board sent you our budget letter with the detailed breakdown of our proposed operating budget for 2007, which we respectfully request we approve to final budget deliberations. As you see, our total request from the city represents an increase over last year of $141,200, which is a 4.14% increase. Please view this increase in two parts. We have noted that the increase includes $50,000 for phase one of our capital project to approve the 32-year-old parking lot and sidewalks at the Victoria Avenue Library. Now, this project is to help maintain a library's physical infrastructure and requires no diventures as it is funded from our operating budget. This accounts for 1.4% of the total. The balance of our requested increase is for $91,200 for all other operating budget purposes in 2007, which is ultimately a 2.67% increase. And this increase is to pay primarily for the increases in utilities, insurance, wages, and benefits. 2006 was a year of many first-time accomplishments at the library. In May, we launched, in partnership with the museum board, the Niagara Falls Heritage.ca portal to promote our rich historical resources. This was recommended by the City of Niagara Falls Heritage Master Plan. In October, we partnered with the 11 other public libraries throughout our Niagara region to present Niagara Reads Niagara, a series of programs promoting our local authors of fiction and nonfiction. We also continued our early years community storytelling outreach program after our three year funding from the province ended. Many preschool storytime programs are held regularly outside the library at various community sites, exposing thousands of youngsters to library books. The successful Family Literacy Event, now held at the McVain Community Centre showcases the importance of reading for our children and grandchildren. This is in addition to our regular children's programs, counted at four libraries through the year. Inga Sikowski, our manager of children's services, and Board Vice Chair, Rennie Piscatelli's spokesman counsel at your April 2nd meeting about the importance of literacy in the community. On October 30th last year, the homepage of our library website surpassed 1 million visitors with more than 700 visits per day. On November 20th, Knowledge Ontario, an initiative funded by the Ontario Government through the Ministry of Culture, was launched. It successfully negotiated license agreements giving all residents of Ontario access to core electronic databases, which go beyond what is available on the internet. These resources include full text reference works, newspapers, magazines, journals, and ebooks appropriate for various ages and stages of life. Any Ontarrian with a library card will be able to access these resources for free from home, school, or work. These databases and many others are available on the library website under online research Under the Knowledge Ontario section, Our Ontario, our library's Historic Niagara Digital Collections was included in the prototype because of its quality and size of digital information. It includes a local newspaper index, an image and art database, and other special historical features about Niagara Falls. On December the 8th, the 2 millionth visitor used our library's special digital collection, which attracts more than 4,300 visitors per day. In December, we launched our upgraded catalog and circulation system. There are enhanced figures for the public to use, and we are now in the process of integrating electronically the catalog of the museum's collection with the library's collection. The public borrowed more books, magazines, and audiovisual materials in 2006 at the Niagara Falls Public Library than in any other year in our history. A circulation of more than 675,000 library items in 2006 was our seventh consecutive year of increases in borrowing and represents a 32% increase in the last seven years. There are now about 40,000 registered active library cardholders, a 25% increase since We wish to find out a key finding in the Foundation Research Group's executive summary prepared for the recent City of Niagara Falls Strategic Plan for the Provision of Arts, Recreation, Arts, and Culture. It found that, quote, "Overall, the most common recreational activities that respondents had participated in around the city of Niagara Falls were visiting a park or open space, followed by visiting the public library," end quote. Their research showed that more residents used the public library than attended a special event or festival in the city, or used a trail or pathway system for jogging, walking, or cycling, visited arts and culture facilities in the city such as Heritage Site, theatre, or museum, registered in a sports recreation program or league in the city, registered in an arts or cultural program in the city, used facilities or programs at the Coronation 50 Plus Recreation Centre, or used recreational facilities or programs at the McVain Community Centre. We're proud to say that the Niagara Falls Public Library is now among the top dozen public libraries in Ontario for highest annual library transactions. Now, transactions include borrowing of books and other materials from the library, using materials in the library, attending library programs, reference questions answered, visits made in person and electronically to the library. A number of people using library public computers and a number of times electronic databases are accessed by library users. So it's very wide-ranging. The results have just been noted by the Ontario Ministry of Culture for the year 2005. The 12 highest public libraries in descending order are Toronto, Ottawa, Wausau Saga, Hamilton, London Markham, Brampton, Ophill Vaughan, Kitchener, Richmond Hill, and Niagara Falls. The Niagara Falls Public Library was third in the province for the number of times electronic databases were accessed by library users. Niagara Falls was fifth in the province for the number of visits made electronically to the library. Our library is pleased to join such a prestigious group of contemporary public libraries and to see the public responding to our collections, databases, programs, services, and facilities. City council support for all public library services and collections is vital and appreciated by the 11,000 people who enter the library in a typical week, by the thousands who are use our website weekly, and by our 40,000 active registered borrowers. We respectfully request that our 2,000 proposed budget be referred to and approved at final budget deliberations. And I thank you, we all thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you, Mr. Dix. Those are some impressive statistics that you've given us. I have Counselor Diodati that wishes to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Dix. Quick question for you, and I don't know if this would be directed to you or Mr. Longo, but one question, library receipts, it just jumped out at me under revenue. It's a decrease of $25,000 from last year to this year's proposed budget. And I just wondered, what are library receipts and fees?
For one thing, Joe, you can expand on that probably.
There's fines, there's room rentals, there's program registration fees, there are rebates that we get, there's a CAF grant that's included there. In 2006, there were some special one-time library receipts, including some rebates and a community access program grant that were one-time events. We can't budget for those until the program's announced and we apply. But basically, it's a wide range of things for, as I just mentioned. It's mainly the user fees that we charge for program attendance, for overdue fines, for room rentals, for projector rentals, that sort of thing.
I understand that you count on Counselor Iannone helping fund that by bringing her books and rights.
Yes, there's a whole wing of the library that is overdue fines by the Iannone family.
Excellent. Thank you. I said fines right off the bat.
Are there any other questions about it, Mr. Dix and Mr. Longo? Counselor Iannone?
That's truly a sad statistic, but it's true. Even with it being at the community centre, I'm still late all the time. They know me by first name now when they call to remind me. Standard expenditures, under your books and other resources, your spending is down $61,400. Your spending has also decreased in your information hardware and facilities materials. Is this because we have everything we need now? Because I know that we did add on, there was a budget where you came and because we did cuts, you had to reduce your budget and we had put that back on. That's a huge number to me, the $61,400 for a facility that is used constantly because A, it's $2 to get a card every time I renew one.
Answer three.
No, I know. I know. Trust me. And it would seem to me for something that's used so much, are we, do we not need new resources or is it just for budgetary purposes? Like you're just not asking for it?
No, we could ask, we could ask for more for books, but when we start the year, our proposed budget is without any special grants that we may be lucky to get during the year. As we get those special grants that are for book related, we up that book budget. Same thing if we, whatever surplus, not all the books are delivered at the, by December 31st. So whatever surplus is left over from the end of the year, we will add that to the book budget in 2007 to increase that amount.
And that goes for information hardware and materials also? Because those are both down substantially.
The information hardware is down because 2006, we had a major upgrade of our software and our hardware. So we don't think we need as much for hardware in 2007.
Okay, I think that's great. This is, I think, one of the best services that we provide, so I'd be happy to move that.
Okay, motion by Counselor Iannone, second by Counselor Diodati. Any other comments?
My opinion.
Counselor Mills?
I just have one question. I noticed on the expenditures as well, the labor and benefits, I guess about the bulk of it, if you didn't have any labor and benefits increase, you probably have about $7,000. Did you take a big raise, Joe?
No, the, the labor increase is primarily due to the 3.25% wage increase approved by council for 2007. And because of the Pay Equity Act, the library board follows the same, the same amount. And that's, that's what accounts for that increase primarily.
Okay. Do I know that, sorry, do I know other questions? And we do have a motion to defer this to final budget deliberations. All those in favor? Close motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Next presentation that we have is from Niagara Falls Tourism. And I know that Mrs. Pierce is here.
Yes? I wanted to cut a conflict. Mr. Chairman, Niagara Falls Tourism Grant has a direct benefit to our tourism industry, of which I am a member. Let's be in conflict.
Sure noted. Welcome, Mrs. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and your worship, councilmen, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that the board members in Niagara Falls Tourism have taken the time to come out and support us. They are our Chairman, Mr. Wayne Thompson, Mr. Frank Lapenna, Mr. Leland Kay, Ms. Kathleen Powell, and our two members of council, Mr. Jim Diodati and Mr. Bert Mays. Some of you may recall that last year Niagara Falls Tourism presented the Corporate Services Committee with a business plan and a budget which incorporated a $50,000 decrease in core administration funding each year for the next five years. Also included was a request for funding from the Ontario Power Generating Fund, which was to be used for website development and marketing. Councilman, I am a woman of my word. I told you I would request $50,000 less, and I am. I won't renege on my previous commitment, but if you have $100,000 lying around that you want to actually bring our way, we could use it. Especially in light of the fact that we have a convention center that we need to fill very soon. Before I get too far along, let me tell you a bit about our organization. Our vision, Niagara Falls Tourism will be by any measure the best and most highly respected destination marketing organization in Canada. Our mission, Niagara Falls Tourism is the official tourism marketing organization of the community of Niagara Falls responsible for developing public and private sector programs that produce incremental visitor business resulting in economic development returns for the city, its residents, and the business community. What I'd like to emphasize here is that Niagara Falls Tourism is not only the official destination marketing organization for the city of Niagara Falls, we are also the official marketing organization for the city of Niagara Falls. We protect the brand of Niagara Falls throughout the world. We not only encourage tourists to visit, we encourage investors, potential employers, and potential citizens to choose Niagara to live, work, and play. It just floors me how many times in the course of a week or two, I'll get people from development companies and R&amp;D companies calling me and asking me for statistics. Not only tourism-related developments, but businesses who would be supported by our Niagara Falls Tourism will provide exceptional marketing and management leadership and coordination for the city of Niagara Falls and Niagara Falls tourism partners. for the city of Niagara Falls and Niagara Falls tourism partners, will raise world awareness of the Niagara Falls product base, produce more travelers to Niagara Falls to ensure that the city of Niagara Falls maintains its preeminent position as Canada's number-one leisure destination, and ensure that all marketing efforts on behalf of Niagara Falls and Niagara Falls tourism partners are research-based and market-driven and convey a positive brand image. The buzzword these days in marketing is branding your product. Destinations throughout the world would absolutely kill to have a brand as strong as Niagara Falls, and they've told me so. We have one of the most recognized brands of any tourist destination in the world, and one of the responsibilities of Niagara Falls Tourism is to ensure that Niagara Falls is always portrayed in a positive light. So who are we? Niagara Falls Tourism currently represents over four hundred members of different sectors of the tourism and tourism-related sectors throughout the Niagara region and beyond. Who are our customers? In two thousand and six, Niagara Falls Tourism commissioned one of Canada's leading tourism research firms, C.K. Schifflin Associates, to conduct a study which focused on our most important and lucrative market, the U.S. overnight. Key considerations were identifying the U.S. tourism volume trends, quantifying Niagara Falls' current market share for overnight U.S. business, identifying target markets within the U.S. with greatest potential for Niagara Falls, and identifying Niagara Falls' current market position versus competitor destinations. Copy of the executive summary has been handed out to you, and I invite you to go ahead and look at that at your leisure. If you would like a complete copy of the two hundred and twelve-page report, please let us know, and we'd be happy to get it to you. So what did we find? Although Canadian statistics showed a substantial drop in U.S. business, Americans were traveling in record numbers in two thousand and five and two thousand and six, just not to Canada. In terms of overnight business, Niagara Falls did not experience losses that many other Canadian destinations have. Niagara Falls welcomed over six point eight million overnight visitors in two thousand and five, an increase of one point four percent over two thousand and four, and preliminary stats show that in two thousand and six, Niagara Falls overnight increased by two percent. The day trip market, however, did not fare as well. For two thousand and six, our members report double-digit decreases, ten to fifteen percent in some cases. Considering that a significant proportion of visitors to Niagara Falls are day trippers, this loss has affected a great number of our tourism businesses, especially small and mid-sized properties and our attractions. This year is not looking much better. First quarter statistics show an additional drop for the day trip market by sixteen percent in our area, twenty-four percent for Canada, so it is going to be a little bit of a rough year. So what was the impact? Two thousand and five, we had thirteen million visitors, and two thousand and six, that went down to eleven point five million. Total economic impact in two thousand and five, and this is according to the TRIM model of the Ontario Tourism, it's the Ontario Tourism Economic Impact Model that is used, one point seven billion dollars in two thousand and five went down to one point six billion in two thousand and six. That means that the economy of the Niagara region lost a hundred and seventeen million dollars. In total municipal taxes, and this is not property taxes, this is municipal taxes that come from our visitors, the Niagara Falls municipal tax base decreased three million So what is the employment impact? Tourism, as of today, represents fifty-six percent of the total employment base of Niagara Falls. On this note, I just want to say I don't think we in the Niagara region really realize just how lucky we are. As long as that falls, it's flowing, there are jobs available. In many instances, we can even choose where we want to work. How many towns with a population of eighty thousand people have that luxury? How many would love to have that choice? How many moms in those same towns would love to be able to work a couple of hours a day while their children are in school to make a bit of extra money to enhance their kids' education? How many of their students would give anything to have the opportunity to work to make money so they can afford their schooling? How many of their senior citizens would love to have a place to work to keep themselves busy and interacting with others? Just a month ago, I received a phone call from the mayor of a small town in New York State. Their only factory in town had closed down, and they wanted to know what we could do to help them get people traveling between New York City and Niagara Falls to stop in their town along the way, even for just a couple of hours. He said the impact would be significant to his town. They were showing you just some of the occupations that we actually enjoy, managerial as well as the bottom basement job, which is still a job that the kids can all use, and the job that us as adults can use as well. So what does that mean to our city and property taxes? If you look at the mean tax in the Falls View area, the average hotel in the Falls View area gives us nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in taxes. Victoria Centre is two hundred and fifteen thousand, and Lundie's Lane is eighty thousand. Remember, this is an average, so it takes into account the smalls as well as the large. Typical housing prices, if you look at a one hundred and five thousand dollar home, they pay thirteen hundred and ninety-two dollars for their home. Per room in the Falls View area, they're paying twenty-nine hundred and nine dollars. Per room in the Victoria Centre, they're paying two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and per room in Lundie's Lane are paying fourteen hundred and thirty-three dollars. Our industry, in other words, is definitely behind the tax base in Niagara Falls. Falls View area hotels are responsible for fifty-eight hundred dollars in city taxes each day, one hundred and seventy-four thousand in city taxes every month, two million in taxes per year based on two thousand and six tax rates, and eight hundred and sixty-two thousand in direct city of Niagara Falls taxes per year. And I just want to stress here that any beautification project in the Falls View or in any of those BI areas are actually responsibility of those BI's and not the city. So when you see the beautiful landscapes going up in Falls View, a lot of people think it's the city taxes paying for that, it is not. I just want to stress that as much as I can. So, marketing Niagara Falls. Niagara Falls Tourism spends over two million dollars each year just to market our destination. Niagara Falls Tourism members as a whole spend over fifty-two million dollars to market Niagara Falls individually as well as in partnership with other organizations, including us, the Niagara Parks Commission, Niagara Falls View Casino Resort, Ontario Tourism Marketing Partnership, and the Canadian Tourism Commission. This is over and above the mortgages, the payroll, and the overhead. This also does not take into account the hundreds of thousands of dollars our members contribute to charities throughout Niagara. Organizations such as Casino Cares, events such as Sleep Chief Charities, reheaded by councillor Deodati, this barely scratches the surface. You would be hard-pressed to find a charity in Niagara who does not receive support from the tourism industry. So where do we spend all of our dollars? As stated earlier, all marketing decisions for Niagara Falls Tourism are research-based and market-driven. The research has shown us that our key markets are Buffalo, Rochester, Syracuse, Boston, New York, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Cleveland, Detroit, and Cincinnati. This coming spring, we're going to be launching a television campaign. It's a very big undertaking, but that television campaign is worth a million dollars and going into Boston, New York, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh. So how do we reach them? Internet, at www.nigerfaltourism.com, television, print, the travel screen, and media. I could go on for hours and hours about our strategy, but I won't go into detail on each medium individually, except for one, the new Niagara Falls Tourism website. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, the councilmen, for earmarking dollars from the Ontario Power Generation Fund for the redevelopment and marketing of the site. Your staff members, Serge Felicetti and Sean Oldley, have been providing their input and expertise throughout the process, and I'm proud to say that www.nigerfaltourism.com will be going live in the next few weeks. So our goals for the next year, and they might be lofty goals, but I'm going to shoot for them anyway. We want to increase our overnight visitation to Niagara Falls by five percent, increase day trip visitation to Niagara Falls by three percent, increase membership to Niagara Falls Tourism by five percent, and increase visitation to the Niagara Falls Tourism website by fifty to seventy-five percent. We'd also like to begin selling the Niagara Falls Convention and Civic Centre. We're all thrilled with the announcement made by the provincial government that Niagara Falls would be receiving over thirty-five million dollars in funding for a new convention centre. We wish to thank everyone involved in bringing this dream one step closer to fruition. That said, there's a lot of work to be done, and time is of the essence. Most conventions and large meetings are currently planning events taking place five years from now. If the convention centre is going to open within five years, we're going to need to hit the ground running and begin selling the space immediately. Regardless of who's taking the lead on the project, they'll need to get salespeople out into the marketplace today. We at Niagara Falls Tourism would be happy to assist in any way we can with the limited resources we have at our disposal, but we estimate that we would require a minimum of two additional people to start making calls and signing contracts even before the shovel hits the ground, as in right now. The problem is that we do not currently have the budget for additional people, and furthermore, it's very difficult for us to raise the funds this year for business arriving three years from now. I realize that this schedule may be a bit premature, but I wanted to bring this concern to your attention for your consideration, because it does need some attention, and I do mean immediately. If that convention centre opens empty, we're all going to be sitting here with egg in our face, so we want to make sure that it opens full and it remains full for the entire year when it's open and beyond. And finally, I'm hoping that you all received your invitations to the fortieth annual Missy Awards, but I brought some along just in case you haven't, because they had gone out by email, and Lord knows if that email actually got to you. It is taking place this Thursday evening, and I know everybody in the crowd is probably going to say, "Great, super sad night, it's La Vitale," and I apologize, but we didn't have them as members, so we couldn't really figure out what their calendar of events was. So that said, I hope that you can make it. I've brought copies of the invitation in case anyone has not received it, I'll just leave it over here for you. And at this time, I'll entertain any questions.
Do you have any questions of Mrs. Pierce and members of council? Councillor Thompson, please.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, but I just want to commend Anna, not only on her presentation today, but you can all recall a very short year or two ago when Niagara Falls Tourism was in serious financial shape, and a lot of people felt that it would not be around. Through Anna and her team at Niagara Falls Tourism, they have turned that around. They have virtually eliminated the substantial debt that they've had, and have done, in my opinion, an amazing job on marketing and turning this organization around. I stand here and say this tonight with mixed emotions. We're referring, and I'd be happy to refer, to final budget discussions for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, a fifty thousand dollar reduction from the previous years. If you look at all of the other organizations that are coming before council, they are either static or there are increases being suggested. Here we are with probably one of the most important economic organizations in this community, thirty-six thousand jobs in tourism, and here we're offering two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in a grant, substantially down from the last few years. Fortunately, the organization is self-sufficient through their membership. However, a lot of people sit back and point the finger about all of the big hotels and what are they doing? Well, we have a possibility of a convention centre, a ninety-two million dollar convention centre, coming on stream because of the private sector entrepreneurs in the city, putting up fifteen million dollars of their own money in the Falls View area, in the Victoria Centre area, one point six billion dollars, which in my opinion was a key catalyst to make the governments realize that the private sector is involved in this initiative. If you compare other destination marketing organizations, you'll find that municipalities are a major partner in their efforts to bring people, because it sustains the economy and stimulates jobs, stimulates taxes, and in spite of the fact that we are very fortunate with the brand that we have here, we are on a decline with our support for tourism. A sad state of affairs, but hopefully that may turn around in the future, and I hope we're going to have a meaningful dialogue and discussion about that in the budget discussions. But Anna, I just want to convey to you the great job you're doing under extremely difficult circumstances. You're going to see a website grow up in the next few weeks, which is world-class and second to none, which is hopefully going to generate a lot of dollars to offset the dollars that are being lost here. But anyway, I would so move that this be referred, and hope people would, around this table, would realize the importance of this organization and what tourism is. And I don't think you emphasized it enough, the fact that what you hear so often out in the community, that the tourist industry is not subsidized by the local taxpayer. If you wipe out tourism and the benefits and the revenues and the taxes tomorrow, we probably wouldn't be able to live in this community. So it's my pleasure to, with mixed emotions, to move that to budget.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Thompson, second by three or four others around the table. Do I have any other councillors that wish to make comment? I'd only like to make one comment, and hopefully it can be added into the motion, councillor Thompson. Mrs. Pierce, I noticed just going on the city of Niagara Falls homepage today that to get to Niagara Falls Tourism, you actually have to click on Tourism, and you have to go on Niagara Falls Tourism. It would be so much easier if an organization such as yourselves, who, when you're more successful than the city is more successful, had an actual banner ad on the website. So councillor Thompson, I was wondering if you'd like to actually include that as part of your motion, that they could work with our IT department to have a banner ad on the city's homepage?
I'd like to take over the whole homepage, but the banner ad's a good start.
Okay, okay. So moved. Are there any other questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Close motion carried. Counselors are noted. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Pierce. Next presentation we have is from the Winter Festival of Lights, and I believe that Mr. Fazio is here to make the presentation. Welcome, dear.
Councillor Conangel, I just wanted to thank you, members of the Corporate Services Committee, allowing us to speak today. About the Festival of Lights, on quite the anniversary plans, I also, first, if I could, just make note of members of our Board of Directors who are in attendance. Through their direction and input, we're getting better and better. Our chairman, Setho White Ashby, also our city council appointees, councillor Wayne Thompson and councillor Jim Deodati, and also Naveyallari Joyce Morocco, all members of our Board of Directors. Oops, I went ahead one time. Can we go back to the first slide, sorry? And then I'll go from there. Members of the Corporate Services Committee, you'll notice that our theme this year is rediscover us. The festival, in fact, the city itself, has grown and improved dramatically over twenty-five years, and we're inviting people to learn about that, to rediscover both us and the city and what we have to offer during the winter months. In fact, what we're now seeing is people who once came with the festival's children are now bringing their own children, and we are starting and continuing a very strong tradition within the local community and beyond in terms of coming to Niagara Falls during the Winter Festival of Lights. Now, if I may just give you a quick recap of where we started and where we are now. As you know, being our twenty-third anniversary this year, we began in nineteen eighty-three, excuse me, with approximately two hundred and fifty thousand festival attendees. Last year, that number reached one point three five million, which is a four hundred and forty percent increase since inception, and a twelve point five percent increase from two thousand and five. Our first year saw thirty-five motorcoats visit, while in two thousand and six, this number rose to one thousand ninety, for just over a three thousand percent increase in motorcoast registrations since inception, and a sixteen percent increase from two thousand and five. Our mission is simple. We want to produce the biggest, best, and brightest winter lights festival in North America, which will attract overnight and day trip visitors to Niagara Falls in the off-season, while furthering our civic pride and community participation. So how do we measure success? We measure it a number of ways. According to Smith Travel Research for the months of November and December for the past three years, the public occupancy for that period was about thirty-nine percent in two thousand and four, and last year that rose to just over forty-three percent. Now again, this is for the November... Now, again, this is for the November and December periods combined for the last few years. Meanwhile, average daily rates increased in that time period from almost $115 to about $100, oh, sorry, just over $130. And revenue per available room went from 44 to over 56. So in the past few years, as we've worked our plan, we've seen a gradual, albeit modest, improvement in tourism measurements during the festival months. Also, according to 2003 Festival Events Ontario Economics Impact Survey, the Winter Festival of Lights has an economic impact of $60.4 million and is also responsible for either creating and/or retaining just over 2,300 jobs in the local community. That's not the only way we measure success. We also measure it by the smiling faces of festival visitors, and of course, our volunteers, of which we had 250 volunteers in 2006, contributing just over 4,000 hours of community service. As we now look forward to our 25th anniversary plans, people will enjoy such events as councils at the arena with Daniel O'Donnell, Charlie Pride, and Charlie Crowes, and this is an event that we expect upwards of 15,000 motor coach visitors. And just as an FYI, according to a 2006 American Bus Association study, the average overnight bus trip has an impact of just under $7,000 US, just one bus alone. So you can imagine what the impact will be from just one event that happens during the festival. People will also see more fireworks over the falls during the festival this year. We'll be going from 14 performances to 20 performances. And it's actually one of the most asked questions of Niagara Falls Tourism is one of the fireworks, and so we strive to add more and more of those to our curriculum during the festival. As well, we'll have a world-class production of Disney's Good and the Beast. We'll have our Misty Kids show. And a fantastic holiday concert by the Mantini Sisters. The community will also be able to enjoy the Winter Festival Candlelight Stroll. This will be our second year for that, held downtown. We're hoping to turn that into a tradition here in Niagara Falls. And of course, we'll also hold the Candy Cane Lane 5K Race and Family Fun Run, which was created to promote activity in all age groups within the city, in the region, in fact, while at the same time as an avenue to raise both food and cash donations for Project Share. Residents and businesses will also be able to participate in the Spark a Lighting Awards, a contest that was praised for remote community involvement during the festival by getting in the festive spirit of illumination. We'll also be holding a community pancake breakfast, excuse me, again, in support of Project Share. And we are in discussions with, initial discussions with Representatives from Niagara Falls Hydro about continuing the Holiday Light Exchange Program. Just as an FYI, we calculated that over the past two years, we've reduced power consumption through this program by as much as 700,000 kilowatt-hours, which equates to about equally the amount of electricity used by 800 homes for an entire month. As we now begin plans for 25th anniversary, they call for a massive increase in illuminations, which we hope will be able to secure through our Brighten Our Lights campaign. We hope to raise $500,000 for investment in new illuminations in addition to the nearly $200,000 we currently have budgeted in our normal operating budget, and this will be on top of the $300,000 we began to invest over the last two years. We planned to work, and now we're working the plan, to become the biggest, best, and brightest Winter Lights Festival in North America. With a successful campaign, we will become the premier lights festival in North America. Here's just an illustration of some of the newer illuminations that the festival has created and installed, and in the following slides, we'll show you some visual representations of some of the lighting initiatives we'd like to implement this year, but again, these are strictly representations that we're showing you. One idea we have is the Niagara Parks Police Building. If any of you have been to New York City and seen the Sassas Avenue Building during the winter months, you'll know that it's a beautifully decorated building with illuminations that are set to music. And in essence, it becomes an attraction unto itself, and that's what we'd like to be able to do with the Parks Commission Building. Again, this is strictly a visual representation. We are still in negotiations with the Parks Commission and talking logistics and so on with them. Another display is a giant fountain display that we'd like to locate this in the Zimmerman Fountain near the base of Clifton Hill. We also hope to create a illumination or display of our very own Misty Kids. As well, the BIAs are showing a keen interest in illuminating areas as well. On the far right of this slide, you'll see some of the candy cane displays at Long Island Lane, which we affectionately refer to as Candy Cane Lane during the festival. Those illuminations are presently up and running. As well, we look forward to both the Fall City BIA and Victoria Center BIA adding to their, or beginning to illuminate their areas this year. We also expect to add two new Enchantment of Disney displays representing the Cars and Pirates of the Caribbean movies, Disney movies. We also will look forward to illuminating the Coming Square in Chippewa, which we'll talk to your Parks and Rec staff before making any plans, of course. We also would like to create Santa's Workshop at the North Pole, a series of displays depicting Santa's Workshop at the North Pole. We'd like to add a few more illuminations to Duffin Islands, and we know we can do this with the support and funding of our local tourism ministry, city council, national sponsors, and residents alike. We're asking for your support. Help us to make the Winter Festival of Lights the premier lights festival in North America.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Fazio. I do have a couple of counselors that have questions. Counselor Iannone, first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Fazio, I was glad to hear you speak about the Chippewa potential initiative. A while back, I did refer a business owner from Chippewa to you, and I have to say, they had a great idea. I had them speak to Mr. Fazio. I'd like to see them extend the Winter Festival of Lights into Chippewa because I can't imagine how that will increase the business opportunities down there and the revenue increases. So I hope it's something that, if you have to bring back to council for us to give direction to our personal staff committee, that our personal rec staff, that it's certainly something we'd be supportive of because I'd like to see that business boost in Chippewa also.
Appreciate that, thank you. Do I have any other counselors? Counselor Diodati.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As well, I think I'm glad you pointed out two big things, I think, in this budget, you know, are worth echoing. Mr. Fazio, number one is the fact that we're reestablishing ties and association with Disney in this budget, which I think is paramount. I mean, it's a well-known commodity, Disney, and I think a lot of people do appreciate that with our branding and theirs. And secondly, the fact that it's our 25th anniversary, and I think we can't take that lightly. It's a banner year for us. The festival's done incredible job being recognized around the province and the country for the great job that they do, and I think it's important this council band together to support it for 25th. I think we want to make a real splash, and I want to show my support in that regard as well. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
And I'll make the motion that we refer this to budget.
Okay, so seconded by Counselor Iannone. And Mr. Fazio, I can't help but ask you as well, I mean, the Winter Festival of Lights is obviously an attraction that supports the city, and the better that the attraction does, the better that the city as a whole does. Would Counselor Diodati and Counselor Iannone consider putting in the motion that the Winter Festival of Lights have a banner ad on the City of Niagara Falls webpage as well?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that. And, Mr. Chair, if I could just make one final request, non-monetary, just if you could. A gentleman who has, whose name is synonymous with Winter Festival of Lights has just gone in this morning for brain stimulation surgery. Obviously, you know Mr. Greg Bailey, former general manager of the Festival of Lights. No word yet back from his family, to me personally, or to Joyce Morocco, about his condition. He wasn't there for eight hours today, but if you could just put him in your prayers tonight, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, you will, Mr. Fazio. There is a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, Mr. Fazio. Next item on the agenda is communications, and we have two pieces of communication. The first one is from United Way. I think it's just for the information of council, looking for a motion to receive and file. Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Counselor Carrillo. Do I have any questions or comments in the letter? All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Second item is a request for an ornamental fence at the Armory property, and the recommendation is that it's for the consideration of council, so I'll open it up for comments. Counselor Diodati.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thing that jumped out at me was the fact that there was only one quote, you know, and I'm certainly not comfortable making a decision with one quote because I know there's two different kinds of ornamental fencing. There's the latest trend has been aluminum fencing, and they've got a quote here for wrought iron fencing. The aluminum is much less expensive and has been used quite a bit around the city, and I would like to see that they get different quotes and include that as well, which looks every bit as nice, just a lot less expensive.
And do you wish, I guess, do you wish our staff to do that?
Well, I don't know if we're going to refer this back to, for staff for comment back, but I would definitely, as a tag, suggest that they get some multiple quotes and explore the ornamental aluminum fencing as well as the wrought iron. I would make that a motion.
So a motion meant to refer to staff? Okay, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Do I have any questions or comments to the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. We'll now start the 2007 budget presentations, and I believe that Mr. McDonald is going to speak for a couple of minutes, and then he's going to open it up to different directors in our departments. And after the directors speak, I'd like to pause each time and see if any council members have any specific questions for our directors. So I'll turn it over now to Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick comments. We, as mentioned, if there are hopes tonight to really go through some of the operating departments and respond to any questions council members have. Binder this year, of course, is significantly larger than we've had over the last few years, but counselors have received it, I think, back April the 5th, so hopefully they've had time to really deal with it. And when we provide us the binder, we did, of course, invite council to interact with the questions with staff, and hopefully people have had a chance to review it and clarify any items they may have been needing that attention with. The key thing with the budget is actually in the first couple of pages. Just to remind you, when we spoke last time, our expenses from '06 to '07 are in at 1.7%. And as I mentioned in previous discussions with council, that's significantly less than simply inflation, and there were numerous other things that impacted our budget, but we've been able to keep that down. On the other hand, of course, is the revenue issue, and we've had some difficulty, or there's been significant changes in the revenue side of it, which we'll get into. So while there's a 1.7% increase in our expenditures, the budget you're looking at here tonight shows a deficit of $1.8 million approximately, or 4.5%. So if the budget was approved as it is presented to you now, it would result in a 4.5% increase in the levy, or $1.8 million. 1%, just the straight math, just say if you're doing that, it's approximately $406,000. Each $406,000 up or down on this results in 1%. The most significant change in this budget that's caused the current situation here with the drop in revenue is related to the transfers from reserves. And you'll note in the budget, and I'm sure you've picked that up, there's approximately just over $2 million less being transferred from reserves to assist us with the operating budget. So again, we're shy at $1.8 million, and we've reduced the amount of money transferred from reserves by over $2 million. And we did that, of course, and we've discussed this before, because we're attempting to rely less on the reserves going forward. But there's, most of the expenses side of the budget has kept up with inflation. You're going to hear in a few minutes in areas where we've had to go over, and you'll get an explanation of that. But the reserves and the contributions to capital, normally on the expense side, we would have a line item for contributions to capital. We've reduced that significantly this year in order to keep our expenses down. That results, as of course you're aware, with increases in the capital. We're going to be bringing the capital budget in on May the 14th discussion, but keep in mind, the operating budget tonight is dealing with the implications of the capital budget from the previous year. So you don't have to wait for the capital budget for '07 to be approved in order to know the impact on this operating budget. As you know, if you approve something in '07 in the capital, you don't actually have to debenture it till the following year. So while they're obviously delayed it, and you're making a commitment for this year with the capital, you don't pick that up till the following year. In terms of the scheduling going forward, of course, we'll have some time next week on April the 30th to again deal with budget items, depending on the direction we get tonight. And the largest capital item, while we're not presenting the full capital budget till the 14th, the largest, one of the largest capital items in the budget will be the Arena Project, and we are, we have asked the council, of course, to attend a special council meeting on May the 7th. So what we'd like to do tonight at the request of council is really to provide more detail. The binder has certainly done that. We're going to ask, as I mentioned, each of the key operating departments, because they're the largest and have the most money in corporate services, we're hoping you get any money you want from there and leave the others alone, but we're not going to get into those details tonight. So I would ask Ed Dulovic to start us off, and we're going to actually speak from the podium there just to have a proper focus for the council. And we have a format where we're going to identify the areas which, in which we have gone over that 3% just to help you focus in a little bit and indicate why we've done that, and also it's an opportunity for us to really look at the priorities in each of these key areas going forward. So they're fairly brief presentations, but hopefully just to set the tone and then, of course, respond. You'll note that we have several other staff here tonight other than the directors to respond to questions, and I'm sure anything that the council wishes us to deal with. If we don't have the data tonight or can't respond to it, we will have a chance at future meetings, of course. So, Mr. Chairman, I would ask Mr. Dulovic to begin the presentation.
As I've indicated, it's a very short presentation. This is information that was contained in your budget binder, and it covers off the eight areas that have broken down for Municipal Works. As you'll know, the various increases there from various sections, and in one area, we actually had a decrease. Question is why? One of the big impacts that was affected this year in Municipal Works was debt in two areas, under roadways and environmental services. We have debt payment for Dorchester Road and for Stormsters as part of our ongoing separation program to assist those separation jobs. That is totaling almost $700,000, or 42% of the increase of the $1.66 million increase in Municipal Works is debt payments alone. So there's not much, there's no cutting we can do there, so right off the bat, we have to account for those increases. Minor adjustments to winter control and vehicle rental rates as we modernize our fleet, we're buying more sophisticated trucks as we're trying to reduce the amount of salt usage, et cetera, that comes with the cost. Traffic and parking control, we've actually had a reduction in that area, as you've noticed on the previous slides. Again, that's because we're trying to phase in some programs that we initially thought we could do in one year, that being replacements of signs, but we're going to try to sort out that program over a number of years. We're also noticing a reduction in our rail maintenance costs. Another area that we're having an issue with is street lighting, power consumption charges. At the time of the publication of the binders, we were looking at $105,000 increase. As a result of some additional investigation, we noticed there were some errors in the billing from Hydro, so we think that that may be reduced by $35,000 to $40,000 in that increase. Under Engineering Services, in part of the 2006 budget, we had a number of staff leave, and to help out with the 2006 budget, a decision was made to leave those positions vacant for the year. That was our manager of engineering and a position in our infrastructure section. As we looked at our operations, part of the organizational review that went on, we kept them vacant. We did determine at the end of the year that we did need to fill those positions, so that hence those budget figures need to be put back into the budget that then impacted by $140,000. As some of the previous councils are aware, there's the new Public Sector Accounting Board rules for accounting that have to be implemented by 2009. We retained UEM that are doing a study on that right now. What they're suggesting is that we're going to need some additional staffing to help with all of our assets as we determine the value of our assets, what assets we own, and have all this information available for 2009. Although it's sitting here in the budget, so that is an additional Although it's sitting here in the budget, that is an additional complement, it will have to come back to this council for approval before that complement is filled. Other issues are additional studies, traffic calming studies. Councilor Diode, you'll be aware, we just got another request last week, looking for some additional traffic calming studies to be done on Watson Street. Although EAs or traffic calming studies are no longer required to be done under the Environmental Assessment Act, it's very much a public process, so we still have to have a number of public meetings, because it's very important to get the neighborhood's comments. We don't want to happen here in Niagara Falls, what happened in Trauma, where they went through this process, put in all the traffic calming, and within a year, the people asked it all be removed. So you need to get public input on these things. Other issues that have come up, we need to, it's not on there, but the update to our transportation model, part of that will be paid for development charges, but we need that to deal with the traffic concerns that have been identified from residents out there. And another issue was a review of unopened road allowances that this council requested that we look at. Finally, another issue again is environmental services, and again, that's the Storm Stewart debt that had an impact on the budget. What are our priorities for 2007? We talked about the information of PSAB 3150 by 2009. Not only will that involve staff at Municipal Works, but it does have an impact on the finance department. Integration of transit and city operations, that will involve quite a bit of staff time as we integrate, amalgamate their operations into a city operation, and that's being headed out by the new director of transportation, Carl Drenn. Another concern that was raised over the last winter was the Seagull plowing. We're going to be going through an internal review of that. There's going to be no impact on the 2007 budget, but depending on the outcome, there could be an impact in the 2008 budget. So that information will be ready in time for the 2008 budget discussion, but that will involve a lot of work this year, involving the public and council on this service review. Service delivery view over water and wastewater section, again, a number of concerns have been raised there. And finally, implementation of the capital works program will take quite a bit of staff time.
Do I have any questions of Mr. Dulevik from members of council? Councilor Diode?
Just one quick question. I noticed in your streetlights, you had power consumption of $105,000. Is that, you're saying that's an increase from last year?
Yeah, that's an increase from last year, and when we saw that, we thought it was a bit of an anomaly. We knew power consumption had gone up, and then as we were reviewing it, we noticed there was something wrong in the summer charges on street lighting. It actually went up. Normally, it would go down in the summertime because you use less power, and we finally got an answer back from Niagara Falls Hydrasun. Yeah, there was a problem, they've adjusted our bill, but we want to do another thorough review on that. But we're anticipating about a $35,000 to $40,000 reduction in that increase, so we're looking at more like $65,000 increase in power consumption.
Now, you know, I've asked this before, but just so for the members of this council here, what is our official policy in changing? Obviously, the province is moving away from incandescent lights, but we're already ahead of the game with LED light replacement?
LED, that's for traffic signals, that's a smaller amount, but I mean, we did a number of years ago, we did change out high-pressure sodium for our street lighting out there. But the next phase that's coming out now is LED, and they're starting to see that type of lighting, which uses considerably less power. And of course, in the future, when LED is viable for street lighting, we'll be looking at that also, if we need that change out when it's viable.
So right now, they can make it for traffic lights, but they can't make it for street lights right now?
Not at the moment. They don't get, they don't have the intensity yet that those are required.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions from members of council? If not, thank you, Mr. Dulevik. Our next director that's going to be speaking is our team for fire services, Mr. Lees. Is this the presentation you have to talk about?
I think it's already been presented, actually. That's not the one either. There we go. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'd like to talk about our increases from 2006 in the general purpose of summary, tab four in your binder. In suppression, we increased $201,000, which is an overall $10 million category, 2.3% represented, and the main reasons for that are long-term interest in debts for vehicles. Employee benefits have been done through our rental vehicle maintenance, that was an update for our public works area. In training, we only had a $2,000 increase over $270,000 area, which represents a 0.7% increase strictly allocated towards personnel development. In prevention, we actually decreased $362 out of the $680,000 line, which represents a 1%, a 0.1% decrease, and that was due to funds that were removed for the Children's Safety Village. It's not that we're not going to support it, it's just that the money that was allocated was adjusted. In communications, again, a decrease of $1,500 out of the $437,000 line, which represents a 3%, a 0.3% decrease, and this is just removing the satellite phone access cost that we were occurring. In facilities, which is our major increase, $409,000 out of the $750,000 line, representing a 120% increase, and we'll get to that in the next page, I'll describe those in depth. Fire equipment services, which were represented by administration on the screen, $23,000 increase of a $788,000 line, for 3% increase, generally in materials category, representing an increase from our uniforms account, which we improved through a point system that was implemented in its first year. And we brought the Canadian Association of Fire Chiefs Conference to Niagara Falls this year, and so we needed to have some money to offset some of those costs. Our office supplies and through administration are also, they were increased in order to catch up from the shortcuts that we've experienced over a few years. Emergency operations, it's showing a decrease of $4,500 out of the $20,000 line, representing 18.4% decrease. However, it's not as decreased as it seems, because we had reserve funds that we did not spend in the previous year, we moved them forward, so it allowed us to decrease the money that we were requiring for 2007. Reasons for exceeding our 3% target mainly lie within facilities, that's tab five, and the internal rent referenced is for, actually found in the materials in your binder. And there's a new category called fire hydrants. This was moved from Municipal Works, and fire hydrants basically are purchased, installed, maintained by Municipal Works, and so therefore, fire department is the one that uses the fire hydrants, and it's just logical that we end up paying rent for them. That represented a $275,000 increase. Our utilities increased by $20,500. Long-term debt that was incurred was for Station 1 renovations and Station 6 construction, which concluded this year. And long-term interest, $35,000 for those debts. Our priorities for 2007 bring us to a new level of service with the hiring program that we were involved in over the past few years. It concludes this year, and we will be at the level of service that was indicated through the council report in 2003. Training is one of the critical aspects of our operation. We have so many requirements, we have so many legislative mandates that we're facing these days. Everything requires certification now, and so in order to facilitate that, we have to bring in outside experts or train our personnel to a higher level, to be trained trainers, to be able to certify people. And that's what we decided to do, because, not only do you benefit because you have the trainers that can train on-duty staff, but you also get the higher level of expertise of those people who are operating on the job on a daily basis. The specialized training that we're talking about includes auto extrication, confined space, technical rope rescue, hazmat, boat certification, and survival training, to name a few. Corporate training includes first aid CPR and DFIB, and some of our firefighting trainers that we have have trained 175 people within the corporation but outside of the fire service, and through that, they've incurred the cost that we've decided that we were going to cover within our budget, because it was a good corporate project, and it's actually found a $5,500 savings for the city if they had all sorts of that same function. And community events, we continue to be involved in, and we will be attending them, you'll see us there, and hopefully we'll be visible. So if you have them, please make sure there's a spot for us, that you include us. We want to prioritize enforcement as well. We have done that over the past few years with fire code enforcement, and that includes the most recent grow ops initiatives that we've been involved in. We have zero tolerance for life safety, and in order to make sure that we're enforcing that, we have to go to court, we have to lay charges and follow up with it, or we will lose its effectiveness. So we have a plan on continuing with that program. And we also need to revise our current directives to what we're going to be terming standard operating guidelines, and that would mean a rewrite of all of our directives, to bring them up to the current date, and also to reflect, again, those legislative changes that have been imposed upon us. And that is our priority for 2007.
Okay. Thank you. And do I have any councils that have any questions of the fire chief? Councilor Diode?
Sorry, I'm alone with all the questions tonight. One thing that kind of caught my attention, I'm not sure if that is a question from Mr. Smith, or Mr. Dulevik, or Mr. Burton, but the fire hydrant rentals at $275,000, was that previously represented in the budget under Municipal Works, or is that a new representation at $275,000? Through you, Mr. Chair, to whoever wants to answer it.
Through the chair, I'll attempt to answer that. It was part of the municipal utility budget, and it was just part of the numbers, part of the operation. It used to be a charge at one time, and then it was phased out, and really the rationale behind it was that the only reason that a fire hydrant exists is car to fire suppression, they're not needed for the maintenance of the water distribution system. I mean, you do have to flush the mains, but if it wouldn't be hydrants, you wouldn't have as many of them. So that's the rationale behind it.
So through you, Mr. Chair, so it was represented, but not specifically, it wasn't a line item in the last budget?
You wouldn't have seen it as a line item in previous budgets in the municipal utility budget, it was just tied in as part of the water system maintenance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I guess, just to follow up, Mr. Dulevik, is it a book entry then? Mr. Burton?
Through the chair, it is a book entry, but because we're running a fund system, they must separate our water fund from our current operating fund, hence, there has to be the transfer.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor. Do I have any other questions of our fire chief? Mayor Saus.
Yes, Chairman, just to the chief to confirm the final full compliment, since the increase of, was it 27 in firefighters?
With the ending hiring for this year, that would make 27.
Exactly. About the end of the year, correct?
Correct. Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Smith? Our next presentation will be from our Director of Parks Recreation and Culture, Mrs. Denise Morsy. Welcome, Ms. Morsy.
Good evening. Through the chair, I'm pleased to present the overview of Parks Recreation and Culture's budget. Based on the eight items, again, according to your budget summary sheet, a few of them are not going to be included, but we've highlighted them. Just a while, the cemetery services, year-to-date, $50 difference. However, I do would like to point out that we are a very active cemetery in the services we provide to the city of Niagara Falls. We currently on average bury over 500 people a year, and we also provide services per 17 abandoned cemeteries. Our parks operation is at 1.4. Our recreation programs, and again, this is a net revenue, but it is an increase, so that's why it's noted, and it'll be explained on the next page. What does stand out, obviously, is the significant increase in recreation facilities, the 832-183. When we get to the explanation, that is fundamental to one reason. Our other cultural services is through the work branch, and it's an increase of 136%. Our management, PRC management services is basically flatlined, and it's noted because of, for that reason. We have the community development services budget, which is, again, noted because it's a transfer of an internal assignment of staff, and then our landscape services. Each of these are major line items, so we have them provided to you, whoops, sorry, to confer with Dean, sorry, we can take that back. Going back to why, on the recreation facilities side, the majority of the change year-to-date, and our total was approximately $892,000, or 10.8%, is attributed to the debt this year being applied on the community center. The increase alone on that adjustment from last year to this year is $1,009,000, and that's a typo, I apologize, it's supposed to be 318, not 138. The other major change in terms of the percentage of adjustment is in our other cultural services, and this is due to a grant being recommended through the staff component of our department, due to the fact that it aligns with our strategic plan and the investment in cultural services through the partner, and that's Niagara Falls Art Gallery in relationship to this particular grant. The change in community development services is attributed solely to an adjustment. We have an internal realignment of how we deliver services. We have one community development coordinator that used to be in landscape design that's now assigned to this department. In addition, last year through council, we formalized the addition of our landscape technician, which was prior to that through our contract services, and not a formalized position, so that was somewhat of a wash there, but we did bring that to your attention. With respect to our priorities for 2007, Mr. McDonald's already reiterated, I guess, potential plans in the capital for, should I switch that myself? Thank you. For the new arena, that's obviously one of the largest priorities of the department, if not of your city. As a department, we want to work towards the key recommendations to bring back to you emanating them out of our master plan. It was two years in the making, and in there are many positive contributions in terms of improving the quality of life in our community, and our staff will be looking towards implementing that and bringing those back to you. One of the things is revenue enhancement opportunities in parks recreation and culture. This will dovetail, we believe, with some of the foundational principles of the financial plan through our finance department. We know that our revenue generation in many areas has some room for improvement, so we'll be bringing back opportunities through the assessment in 2007. Equally important, we feel, is operational best practices in all we do in operations. We are heavily driven operation department, whether it's parks operations, cemetery operations, or arena operations. We think that through technology and through certain systems and through processes, we have opportunities to deliver services in a more enhanced and economical way, and we'll be focusing on that. Our last priority, and not all of them, would be the development, we feel, of parks operational standards, park design and development standards. We feel with having that will improve the subject, I guess, the customer service that we deliver in our community, and also provide the members of the community with an understanding of what we do, why we do it, and how we do it, and also have that tied to a budget in terms of, I guess, development costs and the expectation of, I'll say particularly, what a community would expect in a standard neighborhood park. So that sort of it in summary, and if there's any questions, please take them.
Okay, Councilor, are you knowing who has a question?
I have two, Mr. Chair. The debt applied to the community center cost, did we not, if I remember correctly, do a motion with last council, that we increased the debt amortization from 10 years to 20 years? Is that a 20-year debt? Because I think it was originally passed as a 10-year debt.
Okay.
But we did start with a 10-year, and then you got...
Original proposals, and you write, as a result of that direction, we're looking at all the major facilities to go to 20, since they have a life expectancy well beyond 20 in Municipal.
Okay. Under nine, page two, under arenas. I highlighted the variances in under Net Plus Memorial, Chippewa Bell, and Chippewa Arena. When you do the math for the three of them, we're almost at 2,000, $2,300,000, somewhere in that, in that area, 2,400,000, and it's a 100% increase. Am I reading that wrong?
No, technically you're not. What we did this year to actually allow a better understanding of our operation costs is prior to this year, all of the budgets were, if you're in one budget, arena operations and programs. Okay. You saw a net operating deficit last year, I believe, of approximately $2.4 million. What we've done this year, and that's why you're seeing zeros, and 100% increase, is because we've broken up the three arenas, so we have one operating unit for Memorial, 1% for Jack Bell, and 1% for Chippewa. We've also done the exact same thing with concessions. It allows us to evaluate performance of those facilities more accurately, so you'll see a corresponding budget, and I just want to refer to it, where you'll see the net last year, which was 000, and this year you're seeing three distinct arena operating budgets. You're also seeing three distinct arena revenue budgets.
Okay. Thank you. I assume, John, this is going to factor into your arena discussion on the 30th?
This is actually the heart of the discussion, the operating cost for a building versus the potential operating cost for the new scenario.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any other questions of Ms. Morsy? If not, thank you, Denise. Our last presentation was from Mr. Ken Burton, who is our acting executive director of corporate services. Good evening, Mr. Burton.
Through the chair and to the members of the committee, I'm addressing administrative services tonight, that's tab number three. Administrative services is made up of the CAO and several divisions within corporate services, namely human resources, courts, legal, finance... Services, namely Human Resources, Clerks, Legal, Finance, Information Services and also there are several other corporate management-type responsibility centers. In total, Administrative Services accounts for about 14% of the total expenditure for the city, which is about 11.8 million, 14% of the total 82.6 million. As you can see by the slide, there is a huge reduction and I'll get to that right away. Reasons for the decrease in expenditure starts actually with an increase, as can be expected, labor and benefits are increasing and there's three major reasons for that. There was the 3.25% wage increase that accounts for approximately $153,000. Incorporated in the Human Resources budget is a wage settlement lump sum, which is used for a whole variety of uses, which would include either wage settlements, terminations, there could be promotions, there could be hirings, a whole variety of different uses and that increase over 2006 is approximately $495,000. In addition to that, we are accounting for separately retiree benefits and through our new system of the VAS payroll, we were able to identify what the true cost is for retiree benefits. It's interesting to note that retiree benefits cost is about $653,000. So, in total, over 2006, labor and benefits accounts for 1.3 million increase for Administrative Services. Now, for materials, services and rents, we are experiencing a decrease and there are some unique features here. The first one, which is not listed because it's a one-time event and that's the Regis and Kelly Show. You'll recall that last year, we ran a very successful event under the guidance of Serge Belacetti. That event was pegged at 550,000, all financed through member support, partnership and also from the city's OPG funds. Obviously, we don't have that event this year. In addition, we are doing short-term financing, but we have significantly decreased the cost for our BAs this year and that's because we are stalled, so to speak, in our major capital programs. Also, we are reducing the amount of transfers to unfunded liability reserves or WSIB claims and we've also decreased insurance claims together, the amount to about 200,000 decrease in total for that section is a $1.2 million decrease. The largest decrease in the budget is the transfer to capital and that is 2.3 million, which was a page ago philosophy which came to an end in 2006. Part of the McBean Community Center benefited from casino PIL money, approximately 2.3 million and that was the last of those kinds of transfers. We are now on a use of debt and nominal transfer to capital type program, so that's the last you'll see of that. For the priorities for 2007, we like many other divisions are involved in the transit integration. This is actually spearheaded from the CAO's office. There are two co-chairs on the transit integration and although it's largely handled by our new Director of Transportation, there are several divisions like Todd and like HR, Finance, Human Resources that are currently involved in setting up and getting ready for the absorption of all the toll systems. In addition to this, we have with us a brand-new Human Resources Director and through the CAO's direction, he is engaged in preparing a Human Resources strategic plan, something that we've been looking forward to for a little while and it involves perhaps some new staff, a different way to approach human resources. Ed Dulevik also mentioned about the PSAB guidelines, near and dear to my heart because it's fully accounting, called job security, no, not really, but actually Todd Harrison, our Acting Director of Financial Services, is very active in this. We must have this ready in order to get a clean audit opinion for January 1, 2009, so we are under a timeline. We're also involved in a few other services delivery review. Currently, we're engaged in bylaw enforcement, animal control services and legal services. Finally, and it will be a real blessing to see the final renovations to City Hall, namely on the first floor for clerks, finance, information systems, human resources and building divisions and there's lots to do down there. It takes a great deal of effort to, over this coming year, we're hoping to finalize the actual plans and the staging, because you've got so many people downstairs, we'll have to shift them around, it will take a great deal of effort in cooperation. Those are our priorities for 2007.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burton. Do I have any questions from any members of council? Mr. Burton? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Burton, I appreciate it. That concludes our budget presentation for tonight unless we have any members of council that wish to make some comments. If not, I'll ask committee if there's any new business. There's no new business, I'm looking for a motion for adjournment from Councilor Anony, seconded by the mayor. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.